Ladies and gentlemen, I've got six cam. If you'd all raise your eyes and join me for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the Union Township Board Trustees' meeting agenda for March 11th, 2025, 6:00 PM. We need a, we need to appoint a clerk pro tem. I have a motion to appoint either Mr., yeah, Mr. Becker?
So moved.
All right. We'll take a roll call.
Roll call. You want me to call a roll?
Yeah, could you call the roll, please staff?
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
No, I mean yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Wright, do we have any correspondence from fiscal office tonight?
Yes, sir. Mr. Campbell had two items. The first is a liquor permit from, let me make sure I'm not missing something here. Liquor permit from Wawa Midwest LLC, DVA Wawa 7210, 4536 Mount Colman, Tabasco. This is a new permit. The police department has reviewed this and there's no issues in zoning. The site is in compliance. So that is item number one. Second item is, we received a very nice thank you from our friends at the Snapdragon's basketball organization. They donated $1,000 to the township to help with the maintenance of the gym. And I'll read this to our friends at Union Township. Thank you for a wonderful, for another wonderful season. I don't think I can tell you the positive impacts that you all make in the lives of our Snapdragon families, your friends at the Snapdragons. So that was very nice of them to send that, whatever. So that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wright. Appreciate that. Mr. Dills, would you like to take the floor a second?
Oh, for Ron? Yeah. Oh, so if you're wondering why Mr. Becker is our pro-tem clerk tonight, our fiscal officer, Ron Campbell, kind of had a medical scare today. And so let's all just keep in our thoughts. I think he's going to be just fine. I talked to his wife and himself about an hour ago. So he seems to be in good spirits, but he's out at Christ Hospital. So let's keep in our prayers. So.
I'd like to take a few seconds here then for individual prayer form. All right, moving on. Thank you, Mr. Dills. Proclamations and special presentations, Union Township Years of Service Recognition Program. This is for Cameron Shaw, 10 years and been with the police department that long. If you'd like to approach him. Chief Reese, you got anything to share on Cameron for us?
I do. Cameron is doing a heck of a job for us. He's really done things the right way since he started here 10 years ago. Excellent patrol officer. And the one thing I can say about Cameron is the perfect temperament for the job. He's served as patrol officer, field training officer. He's trained quite a few of our younger guys and girls, went into investigations and recently got promoted to sergeant. So he's done it the right way and he's representing Union Township extremely well out there for us. I'm very proud of him and want to congratulate him on 10 years.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Dills?
Cameron, thanks for being here 10 years and hopefully finish out your career here. And congratulations on the promotion to sergeant, by the way.
Thank you.
Much, much well deserved and so, but thank you very much for being here. Yeah, congratulations, 10, 10 good years.
Thanks, sir.
Absolutely.
Mr. Becker?
I always like to ask, any stories to tell? 10 years, must have something.
There's all types of stories, but I would just say is I'm appreciative for the start that I got 10 years here, 10 years ago here and look forward to the next 10 to 15 years.
What can you tell us about Chief Reese that nobody knows?
Well, he's a great leader.
Everybody knows that. All right. That's all, Chairman.
All right. Well, hey, thank you, Cameron. So in recognition of that, we've got a 10 years of outstanding service to present you with. So board would like to head down and present this to Cameron. Okay, on to personnel actions. Fire Department Chief, could you introduce Tim Stevens, please?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Loeb. With the recent retirement of Lieutenant Charlie Caddell, that opened up a position at the rank of lieutenant. And tonight I'm going to introduce and recommend Mr. Tim Stevens for the consideration of promotion to the rank of lieutenant. Mr. Stevens grew up in Union Township and graduated from Amelia High School a few years ago. Tim obtained his fire certification from the Ohio Fire Academy in 2001, his paramedic certification in 2001 from Butler Tech. He joined Union Township Fire Department in March of 2001 and dedicated the last 24 years to our department. Throughout his career, he has completed fire officer one and two, fire instructor one and two, live fire instructor, and has filled the role of acting lieutenant for many years. Tim has the mindset of leave it better than you found it and is using his knowledge and experience to pass on to our newer, newest members. Outside of the fire department, Tim has been an active member of the IFF Local 3412, has volunteered on several mission trips through his church, and has become very active with Sleep and Heavenly Peace, an organization that supplies beds for families in need. This organization ensures no kids, especially in Claremont County, has to sleep on the floor. With that being said, I'd like to recommend the promotion of Tim Stevens to the rank of lieutenant at a rate of pay consistent with step three of the collective bargaining agreement effective March 17th, 2025 at 7:00 AM.
Gentlemen, do we have a motion to promote Tim Stevens, the position of lieutenant, step three consistent with the collective bargaining agreement with effective date March 17th, 2025 at 7:00 AM?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr., you want discussion?
Yeah, we can go for discussion.
Yeah. But the, uh, Tim, congratulations, sir. It's 24 years, right?
Yes, sir. 17 to this month.
Congratulations. Excellent, excellent. The, uh, I remember you and I first talked when I first took office, three and a half years ago over at RJ's and good people. You care about your firefighters, man. You are, you are just one of the guys and you truly, truly care. And I appreciate you stepping up as well and filling the Union President role as well. And you're a good fit for it, man. And this, this is much deserved. So you're going to make a fine lieutenant and so appreciate you very much, Tim. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for 24 good years with us and many more year to come, but appreciate you being a good leader with us. Absolutely. Mr. Becker?
Yeah, doing great things for the fire department and great things for charity. So that's a bonus for the people of Union Township. Thank you very much.
We're excited to have you as lieutenant. I can't, you can't top these two here, so just thank you.
I've got so many stories to tell.
You're going to offer them up here?
Well, we'll have to get to get her to fire.
Yeah, okay. Hey, we just, we greatly appreciate your service to the community.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Now we'll get on to the roll call.
Roll call. So, Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Congratulations, Tim. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Dills.
Sir.
Congratulations, Timmy. If you guys want to stick around or at least, Tim, we'll grab a photo with you up here up front after the next personnel action, okay? Perfect. Chief Reese, if you could invite Adam Hine up and introduce him.
Thank you, Mr. Loeb. I would like to present tonight to the board, Adam Hine, for the position of communications specialist for Union Township. Mr. Hine is a current Claremont County resident who comes to us from the Ohio State Highway Patrol, post 83 in Warren County, where he was hired as a dispatcher in January of this year. He also brings five years of dispatching experience from the city of Cincinnati where he was employed from 2017 to 2022. Mr. Hine has successfully completed all pre-employment phases for the communications specialist position, including background, polygraph, and psychological examinations. I'm requesting the board appoint Adam Hine to the position of communications specialist in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement pending the successful completion of a physical exam. Mr. Hines' anticipated start date is scheduled for March 19th, 2025.
All right, thank you, Chief. Board, open up to you.
Adam, thanks for coming on board with us. And I spent a little bit of time in our dispatch center and it's really, sometimes can be sort of overlooked, you know? It's always police hire and service and, but the dispatch, those folks are incredible. So I appreciate you coming on. You got, you bring a wealth of knowledge and experience to us. So you're going to be a great asset to the team. But all those folks over there, Sergeant Grimmel's team, I mean, they're, they're good people. And so I think you'll fit right on it. And so excited to have you on the team.
Absolutely.
Appreciate you. Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Thanks. Mr. Becker?
So you're coming from the city of Cincinnati?
I'm from Ohio State Highway Patrol right now, but Cincinnati was from 17 to 22.
I see. Okay, great. Well, it sounds wonderful. I really appreciate you coming on board here with Union Township. We'll look forward to having you.
I look forward to being here. Thank you.
Hey, likewise, we're excited to have you here. And I think you'll, as, as you're aware, and the reputation that precedes the men and women that serve here on Union Township, they've got great culture and it's just, it's always great to add more team members to it. So we're looking forward to having you and seeing you around for a long time. So thanks, Adam.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, at this time, I entertain a motion to hire Adam Hine for the position of communications specialist, 12-month service rate as established within the collective bargaining agreement, with an effective date of employment commencing not earlier than March 18th, 2025, but not later than March 25th, 2025, pending successful completion of a medical, physical examination.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Congratulations, Adam.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, at this time, I entertain a motion to hire Adam Hine for the position of communications specialist, 12-month service rate as established within the collective bargaining agreement, with an effective date of employment commencing not earlier than March 18th, 2025, but not later than March 25th, 2025, pending successful completion of a medical, physical examination.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Congratulations, Adam.
Thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to move on to public comment. In the back of the room, there's public comment cards. So if anyone has a public comment or drop one off there. Mr. McCormick, if you could maybe check if there's any more comment. Okay. So this is a time for the board trustees has made to listen to the public. So if you have a comment, step up. Kylie, you said that you're, you're comfortable?
I am comfortable. If you had asked a positive comment, I would say I would, uh, come up once.
Come, come, come here, come on.
Yes.
Come on up. You said you had a great interaction with the staff there. So you're just, I got your information here, but everyone can hear you though.
Kylie Hunter, 1320 Meeks Drive, Batavia, Ohio. I've just come to the last few meetings and I must say it's very professional and I've learned a lot and I plan on coming and trying to be more involved with my community. And I remember, Mr. Dills, you had said that you had walked down Bob White through some yards or something. I live on Meeks, you're welcome to come down my street. It's not as pretty and shiny and new, but it is a very important part of Union Township as people that have been there quite a while. And so you're welcome to come down our street and stop by and have a coke if you'd like.
Thank you for going. All right, I've got, did you get one more, Mr. McCormick? Oh. Got Chris Hicks.
Was her last name? Do you remember? Kylie something? Kylie something? I think she spoke at the last.
Would you like me to state my name and address?
I've got your information on the comment card here.
I'll do it because you're supposed to. My name's Chris Hicks. I live at 444 Wood Report, Cincinnati, Ohio. I was watching some basketball with some friends of mine on March 8th, Saturday, March 8th, when four people started texting me about a post from Mr. Loeb. And that post on Facebook said, this, he was equating himself to J.D. Vance because like a mob had gone around J.D. Vance's house. And he said, this happens at all levels, especially when young families step up to lead because the traditional American family values are under attack. As an elected Republican, I was out with my kids this week when a protester deliberately targeted my children, taking pictures of us as a form of harassment under the guise of free speech. For them, it was a political stunt. For me, it was a teachable moment, an opportunity to show my boys the values of mercy, strength, and how to stand tall in the face of bullying. We will not be intimidated and we will continue to lead with faith and conviction. I came to realize later, and you can refute it, that that was about me, that I'm supposedly the bully. And what he's talking about is a Union Township Republican Central Committee meeting. Just for a little background, he's on the committee, I'm on the committee, Mr. Dills and Mr. Becker are on the committee. And Mr. Loeb has not been to a meeting in 17 months. He showed up at a meeting on March 3rd, this past Monday, first time in 17 months. Came in late, he left early. But he claims, I guess, that he was under some sort of harassment in the meeting because you know what I did and I'll admit to doing it. And there's probably four or five other people would have done it, Mr. Loeb. I turned around and took a picture of you in a meeting because you're never in a meeting. This is the picture. That's the picture. That's the same kind of harassment J.D. Vance had take place to him? You left out a lot of things in your post, like your involvement in a plot to use an anonymous attack to take a person on the committee who happens to be the chair of the committee, not me, not you, and get them to resign. You showed up at the meeting, I think, because you or one of your associates had arranged for an Enquirer reporter to come to the meeting because the person you were trying to get to resign would not resign. So the heat goes up by an Enquirer reporter. Fortunately, the Enquirer reporter actually called me because some of them know me. I don't really know any of them, but she called me and I talked her out of it. I talked her out of showing up at the meeting. So Mr. Loeb came into the meeting late. A good man who's on the committee is being swift boated by Mr. Loeb and his accomplishment and his accomplices over something that happened in this person's past about 30 years ago. He left all that out. You left all that out of your post. So you claim, though, that this, me taking a picture, that picture, not even a good picture, I barely got anybody in the picture, in a meeting, which happens all the time, by the way, it's politics, you're in a public, you're in a meeting, that's like J.D. Vance getting attacked by a mob outside his house. Mr. Loeb, you said you had come to that meeting to support the person that was getting, that was getting anonymously threatened. You said that you're against that. Well, here's what I have. I have a sheet of paper that says, I condemn elected officials, government employees, party committee members, or their spouses using unattributed anonymous hit job tactics. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to approach, nobody's shooting or anything, and I'm going to give it first and let you guys hand it down and see if any of you will sign it. Will Mr. Becker sign it? That he condemns anonymous hit job tactics being used by government employees. So Mr. Becker won't sign it. Mr. Loeb won't sign it.
I can actually hand it over to the clerk pro tem?
Wait and see if Mr. Dills will sign it.
Yeah, of course I agree with this, Chris.
Okay, why don't you sign it?
Board, let the chair.
Next, Mr. Hicks, I don't think we are.
Hold the.
Okay, so why don't you then verbally, I get you guys, Mr. Dills and Mr. Becker, why don't you verbally tell us right now that you support Andy Capel and that you are against, Mr. Loeb, the use of anonymous hit job smears of people, dredging up information 30 years in their past? Why don't you say something about that right now? That you repudiate that and you stand with Mr. Capel? How much time do I have left?
You have 10 seconds.
So, Mr. Loeb, it's so typical of you. You do the anonymous shit in the background and then act like you're a saint with complete nonsense posted online. And then you refuse to speak up in support of a man that's being smeared and you refuse to repudiate those kind of tactics.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have a new comment card in the back? Mr. McCormick? Did you drop one? Uh, Mr. Bill Thomas?
So typically, I don't write out what I'm going to say before I go to meetings, but I did this time. And I'm not real happy that I had to come here today, Michael, but I told you I'd be here and I'm a man of my word. Mr. Loeb, your recent conduct as a sitting member of this trustee board has not only been questionable, but extremely disgraceful. Two Mondays ago, you made an appearance at the UT RCC meeting. You're a, you're a sitting member of this committee, you've yet failed to appear at any previous meetings for the last 17 months. It was odd that you randomly picked the one meeting that a reporter for the first time was planning to be there. I won't disclose publicly why there was a reporter planned to be there, but we both know why your choice and motive to be there that night is extremely questionable by many people. You sent an email to the chairman stating that you had to leave because another member was harassing you by taking a picture of you and your kids in the back of the room. This street seems extremely thin-skinned for someone that served such an honorable military career and that craves a photo op more than a Sports Illustrated swimsuit model. But what you did next was extremely dishonest and dishonorable. You wrote a post, you wrote on your political page after sharing Vice President Vance's post about being harassed by liberals in public. This happens at all levels, especially when the young families step up. I won't go through since the last speaker said, read your post. So I'll skip through that. But my response to that post, Mike, is wow, not all heroes wear capes. You know, in that meeting, how did Chris Hicks, taking a picture, place your American family values under attack? Where were you out as an elected Republican that night attending a central committee meeting inside the Township Center meeting room? How did Chris Hicks identify as a protester while he was attending a scheduled committee meeting? He's a member. Was he taking a picture of your kids? The picture he shared with you in the committee that he took was just of you and Commissioner Painter. How was him taking a picture a political stunt? How was him taking a picture of you a veteran combat Marine intimidating? How did that intimidate you? You're a combat veteran. I, I don't see how that can intimidate you. You've been through way worse hell than him taking a picture. This story sounds very similar to the gaslighting you did several months ago when you sat behind that table and told the story of your car being stolen and you conveniently left out that the keys were left in your car. A classic Homer Simpson dull moment. Trustees must serve with integrity, not on, not run on and on during these meetings because they have self-desire to hear themselves speak so that everyone can recognize their self-importance. If you watch some of those, some of those sitting behind the tables reaction when you start talking, the face is, good Lord, here we go. Again, how much longer we have to endure the grandstanding of Loeb? Mike, I know you'll pray for me. Maybe you can pray for me while using the F-word and drinking a beer at your Crossroads church. See, I don't think such a passionate Christian as you profess to be would take such pleasure in dishonesty, backbiting, political gossip, foul language, and consuming too much alcohol. But hey, you texted me the other night, you'll pray for me. After you're done praying for me, please go on a quest to find yourself because you're lost. Mr. Becker, Mr. Dills, as sitting members of this trustee board, you have the responsibility to be upfront, honest about Mr. Loeb's conduct. His actions reflect the entire trustee board. He is tainting the image of this board and it's time the two of you call him out. He looks foolish and I don't have to tell you what the Book of Proverbs says about a foolish man. The people of Union Township voted for better than this, deserve better than this, better than a trustee that lacks modesty and integrity, better than spending more time getting photo ops with political figures and serving the people of this township, better than a man that says he can't attend 17 months' worth of meetings to a committee he chose to be a part of, why he can go kiss butt in Washington for several days treating every moment like he's Taylor Swift at a KC Chiefs game. And most certainly, better than a man that had the audacity to compare having his picture taken in a meeting to the harassment of the far-left has put Vice President Vance through. This story sounds very similar to the gaslighting you did several months ago when you sat behind that table and told the story of your car being stolen, and you conveniently left out that the keys were left in your car. A classic Homer Simpson dull moment. Trustees must serve with integrity, not on, not run on and on during these meetings because they have self-desire to hear themselves speak so that everyone can recognize their self-importance. If you watch some of the, some of those sitting behind the tables reaction when you start talking, the faces, "Good Lord, here we go again, how much longer do we have to endure the grandstanding of Logue?" Mike, I know you'll pray for me. Maybe you can pray for me while using the F-word and drinking a beer at your Crossroads church. See, I don't think such a passionate Christian, as you profess to be, would take such pleasure in dishonesty, backbiting, political gossip, foul language, and consuming too much alcohol. But hey, you texted me the other night, you'll pray for me. After you're done praying for me, please go on a quest to find yourself, because you're lost. Mr. Becker, Mr. Dills, as sitting members of this trustee board, you have the responsibility to be upfront, honest about Mr. Logue's conduct. His actions reflect the entire trustee board. He is tainting the image of this board, and it's time the two of you call him out. He looks foolish, and I don't have to tell you what the Book of Proverbs says about a foolish man. The people of Union Township voted for better than this, deserve better than this, better than a trustee that lacks modesty and integrity, better than spending more time getting photo ops with political figures and serving the people of this township, better than a man that says he can't attend seventeen months' worth of meetings to a committee he chose to be a part of, why he can go kiss butt in Washington for several days, treating every moment like he's Taylor Swift at a KC Chiefs game. And most certainly, better than a man that had the audacity to compare having his picture taken in a meeting to the harassment of the far-left has put Vice President Vance through. How can someone so honorably discharged be so dishonorable? Mr. Logue, you, you fund Chris Hicks's page and initiatives with your goofy dumb antics. Your dull moments cause speculation which produce questions and demand answers in the form of records requests, which impose unnecessary wasted labor hours of your staff. That's not Chris Hicks, that's you, Mr. Logue. Stop passing the blame. I'll end on this last question, Mr. Logue. Who do you work for? The people of Township, Union Township, or Linda Fraley? The former advances your position with integrity, the latter advances your hopes for political ambitions that you've texted me many times that you do not have. Do you think anyone really believes that Michael Logue has no ambitions to advance politically, as you've stated on record to me multiple times? You sure are a liar. You need to be better. And I ask that these two trustees call out that post, because it was disrespectful to our Vice President. What he did in that meeting, I don't agree with taking a picture of you and your, if your kid was with you, but that's his business, but it certainly wasn't at the level of what you posted, and it was dishonest. And it should be called out, instead of condoning this nonsense. You're a sitting trustee of this township, all these people that serve, and you're, and you're up here being dishonest. That, that's unbelievable. That's all I have to say.
Sir, Mr. Thomas, can I get your name and address for the record, please, on the verbal?
I thought you said that you had it written down.
I do, but the staff.
Bill Thomas, 1259 Holland Drive.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your comments. Now, we can return to the business of the people of Union Township, and we will move forward with department reports. Department heads, Fire and Emergency Medical Services, Chief Austin Clements, please.
Thank you, Mr. Logue. In the month of February, the Fire Department responded to one hundred and sixty-seven fire and service calls, five hundred and eighty-four EMS responses. We made patient contact with four hundred and fifty-seven patients, transporting three hundred and fifty-seven to local hospitals. We completed one thousand two hundred and eighty-three hours of training, handled twenty public education details, completed one hundred and ninety-six life safety inspections, and twenty inspections with the Claremont County Building Department. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chief. Trustee Dills?
Chief, good choice tonight, and Lieutenant Stevens, it was a good showing of your people to support him as well, so you guys are doing a good job. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Trustee Becker?
Thank you, Chief, appreciate it.
Police Department, Chief Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Logue. In the month of February, the Communication Center handled four thousand four hundred and forty-nine calls for service for police, fire, and EMS, and our records section processed four hundred and seventy-four juvenile court and adult court-related documents for the clerk of courts. Our clerks also handled one hundred and fifty-six court notices requiring officers' personal appearance in court, processed seven Rule Sixteens for the prosecutor's office, issued two vendor permits, handled one hundred and thirty-three records requests with no video redactions this month. In the area of Public Affairs, officers conducted seventeen public affairs events during the month of February. These included three school talks for elementary-age children, a school, a girl scout tour of the police department, and a first responder parade in front of the home of an autistic child. In the area of Operations, our officers took two hundred and fifty-four insert reports, ninety-seven crash reports, conducted four hundred and twenty-two traffic stops, issued one hundred and fifty-two citations, three hundred and one written warnings, made fifty-two criminal arrests, sixty-nine traffic arrests, and served forty-seven warrants. In the area of Training, our officers attended over thirty hours of training for the month of February. And we currently have two open positions with the Police Department, police officer positions. We filled our one vacancy in Communications tonight. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Chief. Trustee Dills?
Yeah, Chief, for our dispatch, have me thinking, because I know our dispatch center backs up the county whenever they can't get to a phone call in time. Does that ever, do we ever become overwhelmed with that? Does that happen very often, or, or not so much?
I could think of maybe a couple of occasions, since I started here twenty-seven years ago. I mean, massive power failure, which is obviously very rare. They've actually had to back us up more than we have them, so.
Yeah, I knew they backed us up as well, but okay. Okay, fair enough, yeah. Thanks, Chief, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Trustee Becker?
Yeah. So, Chief Reese, I, as you know, I like reading through your entire report, and particularly what's called the Investigative Division Monthly Callouts, and this is for, for January. And so, again, one in particular jumps out at me, and, and so I just want to review what I have here for, for the public record, with the public. And, you know, if you have any additional comments, that would be appreciated, but, you know, I guess, I think one of the reasons I like to read this stuff off and keep the public informed is just so you know what you're getting for your tax dollars here with, with our Police Department, and, well, all of our departments here, and they do, they do fabulous work. So this one in particular, so the, it looks like the date was October, or I'm sorry, February the 6th, there was a person who entered the Best Buy at the East Gate with a fake ID. And with this fake ID, he opened up a credit card, and then went to make purchases. The Best Buy employee suspected fraud, and that's a question I want to ask you, how, how did that, when I'm done here, how did that employee suspect fraud? What kind of tipped him off? The flock, so, the flock cameras identified the vehicle that was in, in front of, in front of the building, or that had dropped off the suspect in front of the building. So the suspect, or I'm sorry, the employee at Best Buy suspected fraud, called the police, and then delayed the suspect, kept him in the store as long as he could until the police got there. So, so they, the police showed up, they had, the flock cameras identified the car, the system confirmed, the flock system confirmed the vehicle had been in several states in the Midwest and eastern half of the United States in the two weeks prior. Additional search warrants were executed through the investigation. A total of sixteen victims, personal identification information from multiple states were located in the possession of, of the suspect. So if anybody's been a victim here of, of identity theft or fraud of some sort, you're gonna really appreciate this kind of stuff. So there was eighteen counts of fraud, the subjects are all, are part of, so there's, so there were two suspects, the, the suspects were part of a group using fraudulent identities and purchasing several thousand dollars of electronic merchandise. So, you know, once again, hats off to you, Chief, for, for you and your people busting another out-of-state crime rate. And is there any more you can tell us about this, and, or anything you can shed light on this Best Buy employee, who's a real hero here?
Well, I appreciate the, I appreciate the praise for the Police Department. Unfortunately, there's not a whole lot I can say about it. The case hasn't been adjudicated yet, it's still making its way through court. The case is very similar to several rings that we've had involving people attempting to open lines of credit in other stores, and the clerk did do a good job. Just some of the questions that the suspect was asking set off some red flags, so. The detectives did a good job, the officer did a good job, the flock cameras, again, it's another flock camera success. I can't tell you how valuable these, these things are as tools for our Police Department in solving and prosecuting crime. The flock camera was the sole reason we were able to identify the getaway drivers, so the cameras are paying themselves off in dividends, and, you know, we continue to solve crimes with them, and that's what it's all about, that's why they're such a valuable asset, so. I appreciate you asking.
That's awesome, well, you keep hitting one homerun after another. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all, Chairman.
Thank you. Yeah, likewise, extremely happy with the fact of the work the flock cameras are able to do. And thank you for fielding some of the conversations around the illegal immigration, working with the Sheriff's Office. If it's of any help, I've got a, a friend that was just appointed to the intergovernmental team for Department Homeland Security, so just thinking of that right now, that that may, that may be something, if there's any unique jurisdictions that are working well, well with them, maybe there's some insight to be gained, but I'll let you keep leading the way. Thanks, thanks for what you're doing, Chief.
You're welcome.
Yeah, sorry, I, I didn't see that we were on camera there, so, okay. So, moving forward, let's see, Service Department.
Thank you, Mr. Logue. In the Cemetery Division, from February 1st through the 28th, seventeen burials were performed, generating ninety-five hundred dollars. Three resident graves were purchased, generating two thousand one hundred dollars. One resident, non-resident grave was purchased for seventeen hundred dollars. Three columbarium niches were purchased, generating four thousand four hundred. The total amount generated for the period was eighteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-six. In the Parks Division, landscape areas continue to be, continues on all Township buildings and in the parks, preparation for the spring. And in the Roads Division, in total, four hundred and five potholes were repaired on thirty-six Township roads. And the Service Department staff treated the roads due to snow and icy conditions on February 19th and 20th. And that concludes my report.
Awesome, thank you. Trustee Dills?
Mr. Taylor, I went to Harbor Park with my kiddos, and it was, every time I've gone, it's always packed, and it looked really pretty. Your guys did a great job, just, just really sprucing up, so just wanted to, please, please pass along our praise to that. You know, one of, it's no secret, one of my goals as a trustee, my four years, was to upgrade our parks and the playgrounds and all that. Any update at all on Veterans Park, on the Helicopter Park?
We have some, well, Mr. McCormick and I met last week, we're applying for some grant funding for a few different projects, so we're in the works. We met today with gentlemen for do some concrete work, and then we're gonna put some gutters on, and so there are, there are projects planned throughout, it'll be a busy year, obviously, with the wall coming, we're gonna be working pretty quick.
So, Mr. Becker, just a heads up, we're searching for some grant money for a playground. It's not a hundred percent covered, but probably thirty-ish percent. And then I know Mr. Wright's looking at trying to find, you know, private, public partnership, but there's a chance we might have to vote on a little bit of money to put towards the playground. Just, just a heads up, I wanted to give you a heads up.
Spend money.
So, I, I love Veterans Park, but I am not a customer of the playground like kids are, and they cannot stand it, so it's time for an upgrade, so just wanted to give you a heads up, sir.
I'll take that under, but.
You got it, that's all I got. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Yeah, hey, I, I support your initiative there for the parks, whatever, cut some of the bureaucracy up where we can. I don't know if there is ways in which we can move forward and, and still have the grant funding come in, in parallel or, or after, after the fact, based off of the committed and spend, provided, obviously, we're, we're successful with the grant, but, you know, I was out there the other Monday evening for the kids' soccer practice, and it's, yeah, just, when you compare the forever turf versus the mulch and the, the mud kind of combination, it gets a little difficult. I know Mr. Dills's favorite thing this season, though, is the Canadian geese. And the Canadian geese were like a gang out there for, for us anyways, trying to navigate to the restroom the one night, so. But the restroom was beautiful and spotless, and I know we, we have issues with Canadian geese, I'll save that for Trustee Dills to, to handle. So, but, Mr. Taylor, how has the pothole tool been doing for you since, since we more expediently launched that? Have you seen the more increase of the requests there, streamlining things more?
Yes, sir, we have. More and more people are using the website, which is a, is a handy tool for us. And that way, we get them, we've been out patching potholes every year for quite a while now.
Good, great, that's a, a great way to expedite things for, for you and the staff. And for the residents, it's time at the website, you can subscribe and, and sign basically onto our website and have your own account, so you can get automated notices, et cetera, for our meeting minutes. So, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Becker, do you have any comments for Mr. Taylor?
Uh, just real quick, I'm hearing a lot of great reviews on social media regarding services departments, particularly filling potholes. So, just so the, the public has a feel for it, if they go online or call, whichever they prefer, to report their favorite pothole and give you an address, what's the timeframe they can expect to get filled?
Right now, we're trying to turn them over in less than a week.
Less than a week?
Yeah.
Great, okay, thank you. That's all, Chairman.
Thank you. Planning and zoning, Mr. McCormick?
Thank you, Mr. Logue. For the month of February, for inspections and violations, we had forty inspections, nine complaints, three unfounded complaints, two warning citations, two fifteenth non-compliance date, fifteen-day non-compliance letters, one thirty-day violation letter, four cases resolved, three hundred and ninety-seven illegal signs removed, eight violations for the monthly total, three re-inspections of violations, no nuisances. For permit activity, we had one commercial permit, six changes of use, sixteen sign permits, two temporary signs, ten single-family dwelling units, two additions, one deck, five accessory structures, six pools or fence permits, for forty-nine permits for the month, revenue of nine thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars, and no revenue taken in for the UT Fire Department. And that concludes the report. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Trustee Dills?
No, good job, Mr. McCormick, appreciate you.
Thank you. Trustee Becker?
Yeah, just one. The, the statistic I, I really appreciate the most is the illegal signs removed. Three hundred and ninety-seven in February, that's awesome. I, you know, I hate those things, and, and I've grabbed, not in the hundreds, but I've grabbed a whole bunch of them myself, and deposited them into my favorite trash can. So, thank you, keep up the good work.
Some of those signs are being replaced as soon as they're getting picked up, is what I'm being told, so they, they're, the people that are putting them out are watching when they're being picked up, and then they're going back out and putting them back out.
Well, five, eight bucks apiece, I'll run out of money eventually.
All right, thank you, Mr. McCormick. Administration report, Mr. Corey Wright, Township Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Logue, and I'll be brief tonight. So, we're still waiting on the OEPA to review the plans on the Clapperton Waterline Extension. We continue to work with the county on that. Curb work, concrete restoration, Civic Center continues, that, that work's turning out pretty nice. We did have a JED Board meeting, that's all been finalized, and the implementation is commencing on that. We are finalizing, actually just dropped off signature packets for the JED 9, so we're well on our way on that. Once we have the contract sent to all the appropriate parties, we'll then schedule, we'll actually have to bring board appointments to the board, and then schedule an initial meeting. Still working on our aggregation program, the market is an absolute mess right now, up and down, it's been hard to price. Again, as I stated before, if we are not confident that we can beat Duke Energy's price, we will make a recommendation to go back to the utility, I mean, and kind of wait it out. Had an opportunity to meet with the new city manager for the city of Milford to discuss our past partnership and future opportunities, and appreciated the opportunity to do that outreach. I think Mr. McCormick just gave me some information on the dilapidated structures that are in the county's Demogram Program, you're thinking April, so I know that's a topic of concern. Planning for the fireworks traveling wall event is well underway. Spring Junk Days is on the agenda for ratification. Since we had to get the newsletter out, I'm just gonna ask for the board to ratify that, just out of custom and habit tonight, to do that, but we're all set and ready to go for the spring, so good to go. And we have a couple of items on the agenda, you know, we have our annual non-bargaining unit wage adjustments, we do have a adoption of the 911 plan, which Mr. Dills is 911 Program Committee member, right? So that was sent to us here recently for ratification. And then we have a couple of resolutions related to the issuance of some bonds on a facility acquisition, so that concludes my report.
Trustee Dills?
Mr. Wright, good job, I know you're staying busy, so appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Wright, appreciate it. All right, gentlemen, moving off the public's business, we have public hearings. Mr. McCormick, can you introduce Union Township Beverly Lake Case 3-25-Oscar?
Yes, thank you. For Case 325O, this is for Mike's Car Wash, and it's for Uh, for case three twenty-five oh, uh, this is for Mike's Car Wash, and it's for an overlay plan request involving some front yard setback relief. Uh, this is for the Mike's Car Wash on State, uh, Road one twenty-five, AKA Ohio Pike, there, uh, the corner of Ohio Pike and, um, Hopper Hill Road. Subject property, you can see here in this slide, is across from Independence, um, just west of Honda East. Site is zone B one, is surrounded by B one. Uh, Car Wash was built in nineteen ninety-eight with a variance for signage in the same year. Here's the proposed plan overlay, the teal area there, and the top-right portion of the screen represents the proposed twenty-two by twenty-nine foot freestanding canopy that's thirteen foot height, ten feet underneath, and, and includes some relocated signage, which I think is later in the presentation. Uh, we have some pictures of, of the existing Car Wash structure, and the, um, area that would, this would be located in would be the area that I'm circling now here with the slide near the corner, uh, same general area here, and this slide looking west from Hopper Hill, same area looking, um, northwest from Hopper Hill to the area here beyond the right. And these are the access points, and looking north, and I'm showing these because of the visibility, so we don't anticipate there's gonna be any visibility concerns. Um, the signage is being moved, is not any new signage, it's just being relocated. Um, as part of the plan, as part of the plan for the site, they're adding new sidewalks to connect what's along one twenty-five, which is desperately needed, um, and adding some reload, relocating some landscaping on the frontage. And here is what the proposed canopy would look like, it would just have the word Car Wash on it from the side of the building, gives you an idea of what it would look like here. These are standard on the Mike's Car Wash plans from what we're seeing now. And here are the recommended modifications that were in the staff report, uh, if you want, I could go over those, and, um, basically, otherwise, what you're here to do is to approve, modify, or deny the overlay plan in, uh, coordination with Article thirteen, Section thirteen-ten. Uh, do you have any questions for me?
Uh, Trustee Dills?
Do not report. Thank you, Mr. McCormick.
Trustee Becker?
Uh, do we have the applicant here?
Yeah.
Yeah. With this being a public hearing, have we had to swear you in for?
Yep. Michael Dom.
Uh, can you give your address for?
Yeah, one hundred Northeast Drive, Loveland, Ohio.
You swear, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing about the truth, so have you got?
Yes.
All right, and legal? Are you a lawyer?
Architect.
Architect, can I swear you in also for it? Your name and address for record?
Tyon, Key B A Architects, address is eight four four one, called Pike, seven seven five.
You swear, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing about the truth, so have you got?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, thank you for, uh, hearing our case tonight. I'm Mike Dom, uh, second generation, my dad founded Mike's Car Wash in Fort Wayne in nineteen forty-eight, so I moved over here, boy, time flies, twenty-seven years ago, so Beechmont was our first location in this market, and now today, we're up to twenty-four sites just in Cincinnati, four to forty total. But these improvements, we've been going back to current stores, uh, and doing it, it's a real win for our team members in that heat. It, uh, we just did three of them in our Fort Wayne market, and when team members are out there selling to customers, you know, ten degrees less heat, and knock on wood, we got a good track record. One time, a, a team member fainted at Keystone, hit her head, so anything we can do to prevent it. And then, uh, hey, this happened to me, black ice caught my wrist getting out of a truck, so anything with the team members kind of engaging around the customer's car, I think would be very helpful, too, but, you know, we're fanatics on keeping our property like a country club, we're, I'm doing lot checks, we want to be a good, uh, community team member, and, uh, our business is good, too. We're, we're, we're proud to be in Union Township and our stores, and what we do, and, you know, from that store, but my dad was always big on plowing money back into the business 'cause the customers see it, whether it's new concrete, improvements, landscaping, and just image, but, uh, we're proud of the fact, too, we just won the best places to work in the nation, uh, twenty-twenty-four, but a lot of that goes to our training and what we do, I'd give back, but, and then just lastly, I'd like to say, hey, thanks for everybody's, their time, what you give back to Union Township, the Fire Department, the Police Department, and, uh, I'm thinking over the years, anything that we've had, boy, they've addressed it with, uh, high remark, so thank you, and you're here to talk the dimensions or anything, questions they have. I, I think it's pretty well laid out, and I thought, Mark, you did a good job laying it out, and kind of where we want to put that, that dynamic.
Does anyone have any questions for me? Any technical question?
Trustee Dills?
Uh, no, no technical questions, uh, you said Dom, right?
Yeah, Dom, D-A-H-O.
Dom, uh, so, Mr. Dom, um, remember, all three of us met you when you opened up, when you bought out the existing Car Wash there on Beechmont, or one twenty-five, um, was it a year ago, last year, year and a half ago?
About, about two years ago.
Yeah, two years ago, and so, uh?
Yes.
Uh, we did, we did, and, uh, so?
Familiar, yes.
No, I, I'm life, I mean, I've been a customer for I don't know how long, and, um, what I will say about this specific location, I can never, ever go there because my Jeep tires are too wide, and then my truck barely fits in, so I always use the one on e-scape.
Sure.
It's got a very wide track or whatever, yeah, so, um, but no, your, uh, your team does a good job, and I wanted to just make sure you knew this, so, and my truck is wrapped, a complete wrap job, and I was really worried about the chemicals, and obviously, uh, I'll say the, uh, the brush, or whatever you?
We call them detergents, and then we say cloth instead of brush.
Cloth, cloth, thank you, yeah, and so, 'cause I was, I, I don't want to, I don't want to scratch my, my wrap, and also have the, 'cause when I got wrapped, I was worried about the chemicals maybe deteriorating the colors, and, um, and so, um, so when I called your corporate office there in Indiana, and I didn't say who I was, I just said I got this wrap, I'm, you know, Mike's member, and the lady did some serious research for me and called me back, and, uh, great customer service, and, and, uh, yeah, so no, no issues at all, so for what it's worth, just wanted to give you that feedback.
No, I appreciate that feedback.
I have, I have no problem with this, should be an easy, easy vote, so.
Okay, well, I appreciate what you guys do, and everybody up here in the committee, and what you do to keep Union Township top-notch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's all I got, sir.
Thank you. Trustee Becker?
Uh, you know, I can't outdo, uh, Mr. Dills, but to kind of, uh, continue with that, it might have been a couple of years ago, I inquired on social media, where's the best place to get a Car Wash? I heard repeatedly, Mike's Car Wash. So I thought I'd try Mike's Car Wash, been a customer ever since.
Appreciate it.
Great work.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
Uh, yeah, like, I think likewise, there's great meeting you at the ribbon cutting, uh, hope your son's doing well and everything is well, too, and, um, lifelong customer you guys have earned, you guys do a great job on our vehicles, so.
Yep.
Yep.
Hey, we're proud family business, and our, actually, our offices are in Loveland, so you might have got Loveland. My brother's crew that we reorganized out of Indiana.
Got it.
But just as a friendly reminder, but, uh, no, we're, uh, we don't want to be the biggest, just the best, so if we do two or three new sites a year, we think that's a success.
That's very cool.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have any proponents, uh, of this case?
Please sit down.
From the crowd? Okay, seeing none, move forward, any opponents? Okay, seeing none, go ahead and close the public portion, uh, and open the board's, uh, portion of the public hearing. Board comments.
Sure. Um, I meant to tell you this, well, appreciate you upgrading the sidewalks, it's much needed in the landscaping as well, appreciate you beautifying it, um, easy vote for me, gentlemen, I'm good to go.
Trustee Becker?
I'm good.
Okay. Um, roll call, uh, on, if we take a motion, sorry? Yeah, if we take a motion to approve case three two-five Oscar?
So moved.
I was just checking if there's any recommendations with the, with the five recommended modifications, and you're aware of the recommended modifications?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, all right.
So moved.
Exactly. Roll call. Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for reinvesting in the community.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. McCormick, if you could, introduce case four two-five dash Oscar.
Thank you, Mr. Loeb. Uh, this case is for a proposed new Dollar General store at six thirty-five Old Stair Route seventy-four, and involves some relief for the side yard setback in regards to next to residential property. Uh, so this property is just, is on the south side of Old Seventy-four, just west of Summerside. Uh, most of the property adjacent is its own business, except for, um, the property to the immediate north-northwest. Uh, the property has been a Car Wash up until now, and has a storage use and/or some kind of maybe contractor use in the back. All that would be demolished and removed and replaced with the proposed new Dollar General, uh, with this being the overlay, uh, plan. Uh, with this, so that the Car Wash was built in nineteen eighty-five with the storage structure built in ninety-two. There were overlay cases in two thousand and eight, two thousand and seventeen, including Car Wash expansion, as well as some other uses that are listed in the staff report that didn't ultimately stay there on the site. Dollar General that's proposed is ten thousand six hundred and forty square feet, um, consistent with the two thousand and thirty comprehensive plan, in so much as that it provides infill development, a new sidewalk, increased landscaping, high-quality building materials, which the building materials have changed since the original staff report, they've made, made net revisions, we only have a small little area to address with regards to screening the, the parapet on one side, um, very nicely in store, um, design, and, um, here's some slides, uh, one of the access points is gonna be removed, so the western access points proposed to be kept, and so the picture here is from the, looking west from the western access, looking east from the western access. Uh, this is looking southeast from Old Seventy-four towards the site, it's looking directly south towards the site from Old Seventy-four, and this is looking southwest from Old Seventy-four, uh, across from the site, you can see the Car Wash sign on the left. This is towards the back, what's in the rear lot, all that would be removed. Uh, this is looking north across the street at the area that's zone residential. Uh, the staff comments are, are at the end of the report, um, per Article thirteen, Section thirteen-ten, again, the Township trustees' role, role in this process is to approve, modify, or deny the overlay plan. Um, haven't had any public comments on this, so, um, at this point, would like to entertain any questions.
Trustee Dills?
Mr. McCormick, can you put up what the actual building will look like? Is this the best picture we got with no color?
Yeah, so the one on the right is your front elevation, the one on the left is your rear elevation, rear, rear elevation would be visible from thirty-two, this is the front elevation would be visible from Old Seventy-four. Uh, the more visible side is the one on the very bottom of the side, as you're on Summerside heading, um, east.
Okay, in layman's terms, can you tell me what, what material am I looking at?
Um, so you have a, a, you have brick or brick veneer here.
Yep.
You have, uh, bronze panels, I think, here where you see these, and then I think the rest of it's, um, ephesus that looks like stone.
Okay, so basically, it's not four metal walls like a typical Dollar General?
Nope.
It's gonna look sharp? Um, okay, that's all you know. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Trustee Becker?
It's, it's existing Car Wash, is it out of business or is it still operating?
Uh, it's, it's out of business. It's, it's, I mean, if you see the?
It was there today, it was still operating.
I mean, they've got, they've got bags around some of the machines, I mean, the, some of the machines I saw, I don't, I don't think they worked, but the, I don't have a good picture of them in here, but some of the other pictures I took, I'd, I'd be surprised if, I mean, maybe a couple days worked, but I don't, I'd be surprised if, if any of them worked, really.
Okay, so it, it sounds like they're in the process of then, in the process of shutting down?
Yeah.
And this is already kind of a partially blighted property to begin with, and it's gonna get worse after it shuts down entirely?
Yeah, the vacuums are all, I think, taken out of commission, covered up with bags.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McCormick.
Is the applicant here?
Can you sure give your name and address for record?
Greg Schultz, three one seven Weatherburn Drive, Patasko, Ohio, four three zero six two.
Do you swear and tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth, so have you got?
I do.
Thank you.
Uh, to answer a couple of your questions, real quick, on the, the site layout right there, uh, what you see is all the, kind of the columns that go up and down, those will either be the, some kind of block stone, uh, inside of those, in those little squares, is an ephesus material, which will, uh, kind of look like, uh, it's, it's an insulation material, a lot of the, um, new buildings have it now, it's almost like a stucco-ish kind of look, but not, doesn't come off. Um, and, uh, the little square things, those are just fake gutters, fake awnings, that'll, I mean, little gutter-type things, that'll be in there to kind of break it up a little bit, so it's just not, uh, just a, a big plain wall. Um, we did do, uh, all four sides of it, we tried to make it, uh, visually appealing, uh, after working with Mark, and, uh, updated a good landscape plan for it. Um, uh, we're also, where the residential properties are at, right there on that side, uh, we've proposed to put a, a six-foot vinyl fence there, um, just a little more durable, lasts longer instead of the wood, kind of break it in, in low maintenance. Um, additionally, we were, uh, proposing to put new sidewalks across the front, the entrance we were losing is the entrance closest to the intersection, uh, which would, you know, be a, you know, the more dangerous one to try to get out, turn left, um, so we're getting rid of that one. Uh, as talking to, uh, Mark as well, they wanted it to, um, to be very neighborhood-friendly, we tried to put an additional sidewalk from the sidewalk through the property, stripe the parking lot to, uh, for pedestrian access to the building. Um, you know, we do plan on getting rid of, uh, all the stuff in the back, even though it doesn't show it on there, all the landscape stuff, we're gonna, we plan on getting rid of all that, touching it up, making it look nice, uh, in case the, the back is ever cleared off from the road, you can see it, it'll be nice and visually appealing. Um, and that, that's about it, anyone, any more questions?
Trustee Dills? I do, I do. Are you, uh, I'm sorry, tell, tell me your last name again, I'm sorry?
Uh, Schultz.
Schultz, okay, Mr. Schultz, okay. So, are you, are you the owner of the land, the G C, are you?
No, I am, I'm gonna buy the land, and, uh, what I do is I, I'll buy the property, and, uh, I'll build the building, and then it's leased from me.
Buy a Dollar General?
Yes, buy a Dollar General.
Got it, okay, so you have an option of the property right now?
Yeah.
Got it, okay, okay. Uh, so, yeah, one of my concerns was, well, um, okay, the reason why I focused on the building material, I don't know how long ago it was, but it wasn't too long ago, but it's kind of notorious for Dollar Generals to come in and they leave, you know, after a few years. Um, there's actually, I, I remember reading about it not too long ago, that, um, you know, Dollar General shut down quite a few stores nationwide. So what I didn't want for our communities is to have a vacant property, vacant building, it's the last thing that any of us want, so that's why I was kind of focusing on, well, if your tenant leaves in five years, ten years, they go bankrupt, um, you're gonna have a vacant building, we like to have a tenant there, and, and obviously, if it's a four-metal wall metal building, you know, we want to make sure it looks good, and, uh, obviously to fill it, but also it looks, looks good for the neighborhood as well. Um, I like that you're putting a fence up for the neighbors as well, uh, that, that is good. Um, I think that's all I got, so, yeah, no, no questions, that's all I got, yeah.
Thank you, Trustee Dills. Trustee Becker?
Okay.
I can say that when, uh, from an owner's perspective, when we do do these, that, uh, Dollar General will, or has committed to stay there, um, for an initial lease of fifteen years.
Nice.
And they have four or five-year options after that, up to thirty-five years. Um, we've been building them since two thousand and six, uh, still own a few, uh, that are older, and we've, we've never had them move out of any of our locations, so, um, you know, they're, they're, uh, they've, they've been good to us, and, and, uh, we strive to, you know, to work with the community, make things look good, and, and, uh, be a good neighbor, so, thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you. This time, are there any proponents of this case? All right, seeing none, are there any opponents? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, open it to Board Comments. Trustee Dills?
Um, I'll tell you, I, I, I flipped on this, just, just being fully honest and talking I'll tell you, I, I flipped on this, just, just being fully honest and talking as a, you know, just, at first I was like, oh no, not a Dollar General, you kidding me? No. And I feel like the residents, I don't know, I mean, it's not like, I've never heard anybody in our township ever say, hey, hey, Mr. Dills, Joe, we would like more Dollar Generals, so. But I'll, and then I went over and I talked to Mr. McCormick and Mr. Wright, and not a single person opposed at the zoning meeting. And then I, I went there and visited the site today, and, and I talked to all the, if you, Mark, will you put up the, the site map or like the, just an overview of it? Right, yeah, right there, right there, perfect. So, right next to it, you got a title company, it's, it's a two or three-story building, a title company agency, and then right next to that, you got like Tim Wood Collision, right next to that, and Tim Wood actually owns both those. And, and all the employees were actually very excited, they're like, yeah, that'd be actually very convenient. And I didn't have a single naysayer about it. Well, a couple of folks were concerned about pulling, turning left out of there, because I guess it's kind of difficult for them to turn left out of, as it is, so obviously increased traffic. They were actually surprised because they thought the car wash stayed pretty busy. And when I was there, it was actually relatively busy when I was there, the car wash was. And that's 100% hand wash, obviously automated. So I was surprised, I thought for sure, and then I went and I knocked on the three, the two or three residential homes, I knocked the two of them, and none of them were home. And then I was like, okay, well, there's no opponents here, there's no opponents in the zoning case, all the business neighbors all wanted it, and, and the site does need completely cleaned up. It's, you know, it's definitely, you know, fallen. Yeah, I, so I, I flipped on this one, all the neighbors wanted it, and, okay, so, it's kind of, kind of my thoughts on it, so.
Thank you.
And I'm not, just being real, I'm not excited about a Dollar General, but hey, it's, the property does not look good, it, this will definitely give it a big overhaul. And the fact that the building material on the outside is going to look good, I feel like they could find a new tenant in the event Dollar General does go belly up. So that was one of my concerns, is I don't want to have a vacant property, so, that's my thoughts.
Thank you.
Yep.
Trustee Becker?
Appears to be an upgrade to what's currently there.
Okay. All right, gentlemen, is there a motion to approve case 425-OSCAR? With the six recommended modifications?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Yes.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Okay, gentlemen, moving on, we've got old business. And we'll move forward to new business, before we get, get started on the consent agenda, I'll just welcome Commissioner David Painter popped in during public comment. He, he didn't have a card for us, I don't think he had intentions to speak, but ni- nice of you to join us at our, at our public meeting here this evening, Commissioner Painter. Some new business, and I, I didn't say that for old business, I, I kept you on the new business part, okay? I don't want to take anything out of context there. Consent agenda, that's, I'm, I'm, yeah. Giving respect to the, to the wisdom in the room, is what I'm saying. Consent agenda, gentlemen, items one, two, and three, we've got approval of minutes, February 25th, 2025, regular meeting minutes, approval of February 25th, 2025 zoning meeting minutes, approval of payments as prepared by Mr. Campbell, and approval of monthly financial report as prepared by Mr. Campbell as well. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing no discussion, roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking for this paper. Roll call, so who was the first on that?
Mr. Becker.
Mr. Dills. Mr. Becker, that was the second. Roll call, Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Motion carries. Excuse me, I am out of practice.
You're probably doing this your first time doing this.
No, I've done it, what did I say? More than 10, but, or more than 10 or something, but less than 50, I don't know.
When was the last time, how many years ago?
It's been a while.
Yeah.
Looking forward to Mr. Campbell coming by.
We're all looking at him like, Mr. Wright.
He knows his stuff, that's for sure. I apologize.
Item Bravo, motion agenda, gentlemen. Item one, approval of purchase orders. Mr. Wright, would you like to present the purchase orders?
Sure. So the purchase orders I have this eve- evening is, the first one's for the police department, the amount of $38,796.64 for ITC Technology Team, Inc. This is for our annual licensing and support for our computerated dispatch alert software. Second item is for the police department for Motorola Solutions, this is the CallWorks 911 system yearly service fee in the amount of $28,670.1. The third one is for the police department, Motorola Solutions for Dispatch Console Service Agreements in the amount of $33,931.7. And the last item is for the service department, this is to J.K. Muir Corporation for some road improvements in the Aston Roney Lane area in the amount of $40,000. This will fix a turning lane radius issue that we're having with some continued growth over on those older township streets, so.
That concludes the purchase orders. Thank you, Mr. Wright. Gentlemen, any questions for Mr. Wright on the purchase orders?
No.
And do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Roll call. You want me to call it, or you want me to call for the roll call, sir?
Uh, yeah, you can.
I'll, I'll call the roll call, yeah. Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Motion carries. No, I just didn't know if you wanted me to say roll call, or if you want to say, if you want to call.
Item two, establish 2025 Union Township Spring Junk Days. Gentlemen, do you need an introduction on it? Okay. Do we have a motion to, to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Uh, Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, gentlemen, moving on to item Charlie, the legislation agenda. Item one, Resolution 2025-13 is the resolution regarding non-bargaining unit employee wages. Do you guys have a, Mr. Wright, would I introduce it?
I can just give you a brief introduction. So basically, we look at what the budgeted amounts are, we take a look at the, the various bargaining unit contracts, and working with the fiscal office, you know, generally 3% across the board with a few equity adjustments based on positions, people that are doing more that we ask of them, trying to retain some folks, and people that have done a good job this year. So generally 3% across the board.
Okay.
And I will note, I am not included in this, so that, in that, in case everybody asks, because I'm a contractual employee, so.
Okay. Gentlemen, do you have any questions for Mr. Wright?
Negative.
Roll call, Mr., or, I'm sorry, motion, motion, sorry. No motion to approve.
I don't have any motion to approve, Resolution 2025-13, resolution regarding non-bargaining units employee wages.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item two, Resolution 2025-14, resolution providing the issuance and sale of general obligation acquisition improvement bonds. Mr. Wright, could you introduce that?
So this is basically, there's two resolutions this evening related to the sale of bonds for new facility. You know, we had been looking, I guess, the board remembers, some of you may or may not have been here, we had purchased very large building that was fairly deficient, but we had some improvements there for West Clermont. We were originally looking at our service department there, but it just was too expensive to adapt. We actually have an opportunity on a building, you know, in the sub $60 per foot range, heated and cooled, with tall ceiling heights, to acquire that. And the reason there's two issues is there is an existing tenant that would actually offset the purchase price somewhat. So when you issue debt, you, you have to issue, we can issue geo-debt for the, for the public portion, and then the, the lease portion is a taxable issue. So very similar, we've done this on other issues, 43, 4357 Ferguson, we did it for the McMahon Building, we've done it for some other things, so, so I appreciate your support on that, so.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions for Mr. Wright? All right, we'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2025-14.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Wright.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Wright, can you introduce item three, Resolution 2025-15?
That's the second part, that's the taxable portion of the issuance, so this is for, the, because we treat the debts differently based on the occupancy of the building, so this is the second resolution.
Gentlemen, any questions? Roll call, Mr. Wright? So who's the, who's- I'm sorry, entertain motion for approving Resolution 2025-15. Well, we don't have Mr. Campbell, I think we're all out of sorts.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Cam, uh, Mr. Wright.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, item four, Resolution 2025-16, resolution adopting Clermont County 911 Plan. Mr. Wright, would you like to introduce that?
So, 25, 2516, so the county is required to adopt the 911 Plan, there were some statutes that went into place, they have this committee, it's got the city, largest city, it's got the township, it's got several other members, and they all meet and they go over the plan. Plan's pretty rudimentary, describes the plan for 911 service in the county. We appreciate, you know, the three-party, it's basically a three-part plan. You got, of course, Clermont County, which covers the greatest geographical area, Union Township Dispatch, and then also includes Northeast Communication Center. So we appreciate the county's work to put this together, getting this to us, and, you know, Mr. Dills was involved with that, and so we just have to ratify the plan as part of kind of the global, in our little corner of the universe, ratification on that, so.
Okay. Gentlemen, do you have any questions for Mr. Wright?
No.
All right, do we have a motion to approve Resolution 2025-16?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Wright.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Gentlemen, we're on to comments from board members. Mr. Dills?
Not much, hour and 20 minutes, not bad, Mr. Loeb, good meeting. That's all I got, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Dills. Mr. Becker?
So, yeah, this is going to dovetail onto something Mr. Dills said earlier. It was Sunday afternoon, I think it was Sunday, Sunday afternoon, about 5:00, I'm coming out from Melford, I thought, I'm going to cruise through Clepper Park just to see what's going on. And I was very pleased with what I found, you know, beautiful day, and, you know, park clean, well-maintained, people playing pickleball, people in the dog park, their, you know, walk, their dogs running loose inside the, you know, inside the fence where they're supposed to be. People flying kites, people tossing baseball, you know, people shooting basketball, let's goes on, you know, people walking, walking the track, and it's just good to see the, you know, the, the, the people, Union Township, taking advantage of the facilities that we have here, so, you know, it, it, it gives us encouragement that we're spending money in the right places, you know, for the, for the, for the people, that's what they want to see. So this kind of stuff encourages me to maybe, maybe vote yes, in Veterans Park, there's some upgrades there.
7:20, I need that video sent to my email. Hold it.
See if I left out anything. Walking track.
I can't believe you just said that, Mr. Becker. I'm, I'm very proud of you.
No, that was it. I, you know, I, I've been periodically, you know, checking Clepper Park, I wanted to know.
It's packed, it's a beautiful park.
Yeah, are people using these play, the playground, playset, people were on it. And a lot of, I was doing this last year, and it was like, you know, 90 degrees out, I can understand people not being out when it's 90 degrees out. But, you know, Sunday at 5:00, it was like 65 degrees, there was no reason for people not to be out, and they were out, they were, they're having a great time, families.
Oh, I, if it's okay, Mr. Chairman, the, I do have one complaint, Mr. Chairman, that we goofed up on in that park. My daughter's a gymnast, and there is no monkey bars at that park, there is none. So, maybe at Veterans Park, we, we gotta have monkey bars, so, it's my one request. So, that's all I got, sir.
We're going to get a splash pad for the days it's 90 degrees.
That's true. I'd like to see you out there, Mr. Becker.
In the splash pad?
Yeah.
Not out. That's all I have, though, Mr. Chairman.
How about one of those athletic fitness workout parks? Get you out there, down some, have you seen those?
I have, they're pricey.
We'll get you out there.
They're pricey. I'm sure we have a coupon somewhere.
I, I can be convinced to spend money, it just takes some convincing.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm good on the athletic, the fitness workout ones, I just, I just, you know, I know, I know that you, you, you find yourself in the gym frequent enough, and I want to talk to your, your good, your good senses there. Yeah, Veterans Park, just, you guys hit it.
But he's a good one.
You definitely hit it, it's, yeah, and it needs some love and attention, but you're absolutely right, it's so great to, to see the foot traffic at Clepper Park. Like I said long before that, if you do the right type of investment into a park and bring it back to life, because it was dead, and you do the right investment and it's